It has been moved in second that we reconvene in open session and adopt the certification of closed session. All those in favor use your usual sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Whereas the Dinwiddie County School Board has convened a closed session on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas paragraph 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Dinwiddie County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board. Dr. Elaine J. Pearson, District One.
I certify.
Dwayne G. Walker, District Two.
I certify.
Barbara T. Pittman, District Three.
I certify.
Mary M. Benjamin, District Four.
I certify.
Jason L. Brown II, District Five.
I certify.
All have certified, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We would... Now we will entertain, join us in the participation of the pledge of allegiance with the students from Southside Elementary. Thank you. I could hear some loud voices. I could hear them all.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Are there any amendments? Are there any amendments first to the agenda?
No, there are no amendments to the agenda.
Okay, then we entertain the motion, your second, first given by Elaine, second by Wayne. All those in favor use the usual sign.
Aye.
Here are no nays. The motion is carried. Closed session report.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the personnel list as presented. Second.
It has been moved in second that we accept the personnel list as presented. All those in favor use the usual sign.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any nays? In extension, one. One extension. The motion is carried.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the expenditure reports as presented.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we accept the expenditure reports as reported. All those in favor use the usual sign.
Aye.
In extensions. Here are none, the motion is carried.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from our meeting on October 14th of this year as well as our meeting from October 28th of this year.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we approve the minutes of October 14th and October 28th of 2025. All those in favor use the usual sign.
Aye.
Any nays? Here are none, the motion is carried. And now we're gonna go to recognition.
Yes, at this time we would have Ms. Colbert come forward.
Good evening, School Board members, Dr. Weston, family and guests. And welcome to Southside Elementary's presentation. We're so happy to be sharing with you today the happenings that are happening down at Southside. We are the home of the bees and proud of it. And tonight you are going to hear from our students about how we are becoming career-ready at Southside. So this year we are starting a brand-new program that was spearheaded by Ms. Bazemore and Ms. Star-Hargrove, our school counselors. And it is called the Southside Classifieds. And the purpose of this program was for students to explore different types of job opportunities that they can research and find out about and then get that job within the school. What you'll see in front of you right there is you have a yellow packet in front of you that we've shared with you. And inside of that yellow packet is gonna show you a little bit about what our students have and they'll explain more about their jobs. But they had to read what the job application was about. They had to apply for it. And they had to fill out the job application, make sure they met all the requirements, and even had to go on a job interview in order to get it. So we even sweeten it with a B-buck store check if you do your job the way you're supposed to. But we are beginning that building of our academic career plan and portfolio. And we're just having our students learn more about jobs and just what it's gonna take for them to go out there to be successful in the future. So we're gonna let them come forward now and start sharing about their jobs.
Hello, my name is Aiden Carlson and I work as an IT helper. Welcome to Southside Classifieds where we are becoming career-ready for our future. This year's students at Southside Elementary have the opportunity to get hired for special jobs that help our school to be successful. From classroom helpers to technology assistants and safety leaders, each of us plays an important role in our school. And a job isn't a job without a paycheck. We earn B-buck checks to spend at our school store, now we will tell you about our jobs.
Hello, my name is Isaiah Farrell. To get our jobs, we had to go through a real application process, just like grownups do. We filled out applications, explaining why we wanted the job and what skills we have. We also had to make sure we met the job requirements, good attendance and good classroom and good bus behavior.
My name is Ryan Prozise and I am a Safety Patrol. We interview with our supervisors, Ms. Bazemore and Ms. Hargrove. I must admit, I was really nervous about going to a job interview. Once we got our job, we have to continue to meet our job expectations by keeping up with our academics, behavior, and having a good attitude about our job.
My name is Micah Gooden and I am one of three U.S. flag raisers. Each morning we raise the American and Virginian flags. We've learned the importance of folding the flag properly and how to fly it at half-staff to honor important national and state events. We report directly to SRO Fleishman who has taught us valuable lessons about citizenship and how to show respect for our country, state, and county.
Hello, my name is Jordan Hill and I am a mail monitor. My job is to help Ms. Kafka pick up and deliver mail to classrooms each day.
My name is Journey Williams and we are part of the Safety Patrol team. I was also promoted to the position of Safety Patrol Captain. This took hard work and dedication. We take our job seriously because safety matters. Whether it's holding doors, reminding students to slow down, or helping a younger student with their backpack, or tying their shoes, we are always ready to lend a hand.
My name is Jonathan Scott and I am a member of the Safety Patrol team. I was currently promoted to the position of Sergeant for the Safety Patrol team. As Sergeant, as Safety Patrol, we must report to work in the mornings and afternoons. And we can earn 100 B-bucks checks each month for keeping everyone safe.
Hi, my name is Isabel Russell and I am a Safety Patrol. Being on the Safety Patrol team isn't just about wearing a belt and a badge. It's about being a leader and a role model. We set a good example for other students by showing respect and responsibility every day. I'm very proud to be a Safety Patrol.
Hello, my name is Amber Donnelly and I am a birthday book vending machine helper. We get to say happy birthday to someone new every day. We work with Ms. Lauren to give birthday tokens and help students choose their special new book.
Hi, my name is Harper Callaway and I am a birthday book vending machine helper. My job is to assist students with selecting their book from the book vending machine. And we also earn 50 B-bucks a month and we see lots of smiles every day.
Good evening, my name is Jamison McIntosh and I am a feedmore helper. As a feedmore helper, I assist with organizing and setting up food programs that support families in need. I help sort and prepare food for pickup, making sure everything is ready for distribution.
My name is Trey Berry and I'm one of the next Academy Award-winning actors standing before you today. My job was to create the Southside Boots on the Ground attendance video, reminding everyone that you can't learn if you're not in school and you can't keep a job if you don't show up for work.
My name is Floyd Davis and I participated in creating the Boots on the Ground attendance video for Southside. For all of our Southside Classified jobs, attendance matters. Students who have two unexcused absences can be dismissed from their jobs. We're learning early that responsibility and showing up are key to success.
Hi, my name is Trent Loving and I'm a mail monitor. Customer service is very important in our job. We make sure every delivery comes with a smile. We earn 50 B-bucks a month for a job well done.
My name is Drake Day and I love being active and... I love part of the run club at Southside Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Mary Bazemore. I'm a part of the, uh, run club, uh. It keeps me healthy and strong. Running can be such a mental rest, can be a mental reset. Being around others in the club can help clear out minds for work and help us focus afterward.
So I hope you have enjoyed how we are trying to employ the future. Our Southside Classified programs has helped us practice the five Cs that we're working on in our school, which is communication, collaboration, critical thinking, creativity, and citizenship. And we are really striving to move forward to that pathway. And we hope that by doing so, we're giving kids an idea of, as you move on in the future, you'll be enrolled in college, enlisted in the military, employed to become employed or even become that entrepreneur or the Academy Award-winning actor. So we have some special things for you so that you will remember a spy. And we have our two Bs helping us. Yes, we have McKenna and Ainsley that are helping us here.
Doing a good job. Thanks, that's a good job.
Thank you so much for your time and I hope that you've enjoyed how we are getting career-ready.
And now we would like to recognize the teachers, the parents, and everyone who came to support Southside Elementary this evening. Board, would you like to say something before we allow them, tell them they can go take pictures of what they would like to do?
I always think that this is the best part of our school board meetings because we go and we deal with personnel and student discipline and we come in here and the students are so uplifting when they make their presentations to us that it sort of changes our whole outlook for the rest of the meeting. So thank you very much for bringing the students, parents and teachers, you've done an expert job. Thank you.
I just love seeing the room full. I appreciate parents that make their way out. The kids obviously are why we're all here. But it's always encouraging to see the support system behind the kids. And so I appreciate all of you that are doing so much to help your children succeed.
I think that I'm very pleased to see the inclusion of public speaking and of course that's a part of each presentation that we have each month. But it's so important, those soft skills, being able to stand up, be confident. Work on the fact that you can speak in public is so important to our success in other areas of life. So thank you for doing that and keep up the good work.
Thank you too, as had been mentioned before, all of the Southside parents and teachers and everyone that's making it possible, especially with our students and their education. Good job on the presentation. I'm an adult and I can say that it's not always easy doing job interviews. I don't think it gets any easier, so you're absolutely right. Also, if you are working and not getting a check, there's a problem. So keep up the hard work. I hope you guys enjoy your Thanksgiving break as that comes up as well. Thank you.
Yes, thank you all for coming. I think the kids are definitely a direct reflection of what the county is doing as a whole. And I really think that we're growing as a community and I really thank you all for everything you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colbert, parents, teachers, staff, and everyone who came out to support Southside and to support the board meeting this evening. Thank you so much and thank you for what you're doing. And I want to get that paycheck and I might try for that acting job, I don't know. But I have a special guest here who I will recognize. I just looked through the crowd and I just saw my special guest, Ms. Joanne Berry. Just hold your hand up, thank you for coming. So now parents, teachers, you may go out and you have some homework to do or some dinner to make. You may take pictures or, and you may be excused at this time. And thank you so much for coming. We thank, weren't those students great this evening? Let's give them a hand in the air. Mr. Torres.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Haven't seen y'all in a few. Been at least a month or two, I think, since I've been down.
You gonna make up for it.
Yeah, we're making up for it tonight. I believe we got four of them. The first one here is wrestling, they're all wrestling tournaments. And this one is to Alexandria, Virginia. It gives our boys team a chance to wrestle at a higher-class tournament, seeing different competition and improving. It's a two-night, or it's an overnight deal. So they'll be leaving on the fifth and coming back on the sixth.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions about the boys wrestling tournament and it going to Alexandria for Mr. Torres?
I move that the boys wrestling tournament in Alexandria, Virginia be approved.
A second. It has been moved in second that the boys wrestling tournament in Alexandria be approved. All those in favor use the usual sign.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any nays? The motion is carried.
The second one we have here is a girls', uh, actually, the next three are girls' wrestling trips. As you know, we, we have a prominent girls' program. We're one of the most prominent in the state, I'd have to say. But, uh, Coach, excuse me, Coach Rogerson has us signed up to go up to, uh, or down to Goldsboro, North Carolina, um, December 12th. It's a one-day trip. He's gonna be taking the activity bus, um, and we're asking for approval since it's out of state.
That's a good, he was asking if there's a female going with him?
Uh, Ms. Martin is now a stipended coach. She is on staff, uh, so that did help this year.
Yeah. I, I move that we approve the wrestling trip to Goldsboro, North Carolina. With the, that'll point.
It has been moved and second that we approve the girls' wrestling team tournament going to Goldsboro, North Carolina. All those in favor, use the usual sign. Aye. Are there any nays? Hearing none. It is approved. Girls' wrestling team to Quicksburg, Virginia?
Yes, that's our next one. Stonewall Jackson High School in Quicksburg. Uh, this is a two-day, two-day trip. It's an overnight trip. It's the same, uh, weekend as the boys. They will be leaving on the fifth, coming back the sixth. Due to the distance we have to travel, they need to stay overnight, because weigh-in starts the next morning, I believe at like eight o'clock. Matches start at nine. So it's really for us to leave, or we'd have to leave by four o'clock in the morning, and it just would not, uh, work that way. But, um, coaches, both coaches go, Coach Rogerson, uh, Coach Martin, and a bunch of parents always attend these trips, as well as chaperones, pseudo-chaperones. They're always all together up there. Uh, we're looking at taking sixteen, uh, sixteen girls, the two adults on the activity bus.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the girls' wrestling team trip to Quicksburg, Virginia.
Second.
It has been moved and second that we approve the girls' wrestling team tournament trip to Quicksburg, Virginia. All of those in favor, use the usual sign. Aye. Are there any nays? Hearing none, that trip is approved.
I do have a question. So if you're taking the activity bus, and there's only sixteen seats on that, you have more than sixteen kids on that team?
They take the varsity weight classes, because you have to, you're only allowed fifty matches, or there's a number of matches you're allowed, but they placate them by, you know, if I'm number one at one thirty-five, you know, I would go in that spot for the one thirty-five class, or whatever class it is.
Just, it's possible that some are going to some matches and not others?
Yes, we have, like, the, the local matches will take a full school bus, uh, to the JV matches, and certainly, because girls is not totally to where my girls' team could wrestle yours' girls' team, like Thomas Dale. They have two girls, you know? So some of our girls, yeah, some of our girls will wrestle with JV to get their matches in, because it is still a co-ed, even though it is a, you have to pick one or the other when you enter the state tournament. All right, the third, or the final one is Rock Hill, South Carolina. Again, uh, they'll be leaving January second, coming back the third. Two-day tournament, and, you know, the drive is long, so that is the request for the overnight. Again, sixteen kids, two adults, along with the parent chaperones. And that's what we're asking for.
January second and third?
Um, is that what I have here? Yes, I have January second and third. Yes, it's over Christmas break.
That's a Friday, Saturday?
Yes.
Do they still have a lot of students that are attending?
For us? No, I don't believe so. I believe our, our students are, I mean, we have in the past always been very dedicated. The kids come in, they wrestle over break, because they know, uh, basketball and, um, wrestling and our winter sports, they know that that, I mean, Christmas break has always been built in. You know, so growing up, you're playing basketball, or you're wrestling over this break anyhow. You know, it's not kind of, it's not the same as a spring break, unless you're playing in a tournament-type of deal.
I move that we approve the wrestling tournament to Rock Hill, South Carolina for the girls. Second.
It moves in second that we approve the girls' wrestling team tournament to Rock Hill, South Carolina. All those in favor, use the usual sign. Any nays? Hearing none, it's approved.
All right, thank you. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Anderson?
That was really smart of you to bring a student, because then it's hard to say no to students.
Always thinking ahead.
That's right.
Good afternoon, board members. Uh, my name is Crystal Anderson, and I have the pleasure of teaching Intro to Business and Marketing at Deloitte Middle School, which is a high-school level class. I'm also the FBLA advisor. I have with me a member representing FBLA, Ms. Bailey Johnson, and Mr. Aiden Flowers, who was a member of my class. At the beginning of the school year, my class is a project-based class, where we do a lot of projects and hands-on activities. As I was teaching a lesson on marketing and branding, it became obvious that one of the most trusted brands amongst our students was Nike. So I thought, why don't I put a trip together for them to really learn more about Nike? So as part of their project, this class has been working on planning, event planning, making phone calls, and even talking to Nike executives, which we would hope to meet with at New York. So the trip starts off, and we will take the Amtrak. Most of my students, all of my students, none of my students have ever been on a train, so this will be a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for them. Only one have been, has been to New York City. And I would like for them to, they will take the train in New York. We're gonna eat in Times Square, we've made reservations. And then we will go to the highlight of the trip, which is meeting with Nike executives, a marketing executive, and giving a tour of the Nike House of Innovation, where our students will have the opportunity to design their own Nike product. So, um, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We have made the phone calls, we have set things up. Students are eager to fundraise and sponsor this trip themselves. We are gonna probably need a little help, but, but for the most part, they have agreed and have plans even for fundraising to so fully support the trip. After that, we will eat again, and then we will see Hamilton. So, so they have, so they also never been. So my, my, uh, my motto is all about life experience. I want to make sure my students and those students who are lucky enough to go on this trip will have an experience they will never forget. So if you all approve, um, we would love to go to New York City on January eighth through ninth. It is a whirlwind trip, and they know this. We are not gonna stay overnight. We, if we raise the money, you all approve, we will stay overnight. But right now, we have budgeted to go up, and we will take the midnight train back to Virginia. Uh, we will be back the early morning, about eight AM on the ninth. So it is, uh, over, and that's the only maybe issue. And we will be able, hopefully, to raise funds or get donations. I have been reaching out to community members in efforts to think ahead in case we do, we are required to stay overnight to help me with hotels. But I'm very confident that we will have the support and the funding.
How many students are you planning to go? Twenty?
Twenty to twenty-two.
How many adults? How many adults?
Seven.
Seven, seven adults. Great.
Plus the six that you're seeking. That'd be a great trip.
So how much are you all looking to raise, and then what are the fundraisers?
So we have, we have priced without staying overnight, it's two seventy-five a student. Staying overnight is, it would be about three twenty-five a student. The fundraisers we have, um, coming up in movie and game night, that, that's after school at the middle school, that will be on December fourth. And students will pay six dollars, and we'll sell concessions that we have projected that will be enough to cover our Amtrak calls. The students are also doing a calendar fundraiser, where they have thirty people to pick a day on the calendar, and they pay based on the date that they pick. So provided they do that, if every student finds thirty or thirty-one people, we would have over three, they would raise three forty, which is more than enough for even the overnight. But we can't guarantee, I don't know if every student, they said they're committed to it, and I'm hoping they will meet the goal. But if not, that is a fundraiser. And then we're doing some coffee and donuts, um, in, in the winter months to raise money as well. And we also have a presentation at our church, um, Olive Bridge Baptist Church, on this Sunday from FBLA, and we're hoping to do. And we have some members of FBLA that we are requesting scholarships through BTE. So our FBLA members will be submitting scholarship requests, so to help. So those are our ideas for.
Do you have an idea what it would cost if you do stay overnight? Three, you said that, all right.
Per student, so that, what is that? Oh, three twenty-five times twenty-two kids.
So about fifty dollars more per student.
I'm thinking, one thing that may be able to help as well, being a former FBLA member, I wonder if, uh, some of the older sponsors may still be in touch with older members of FBLA. And I think, once you tell them, you know, these numbers, and, you know, just the excitement behind the trip, that some older students may be interested in, you know, possibly chipping in some money to help out with this and support it. So, you know, I don't know, Miss, uh, Dr. Gobler, Miss Rozell, or, um, you know, I'm trying to think of some of the ones we had back at the middle school, you know? I'm certain that there are students out there that, like I said, if they heard about this, they'd be more than willing to help out, so that may be an idea.
Sponsor a student or something.
We can look at that, and we're all about calling the news, and we can do a, uh, a Q, we already have a QR code where people can give individuals, like, they don't have to, it'd be an exact amount for the calendar, so on the calendar it says, you know, or lack, you know? So, and we do have some parents, we just had our FBLA induction ceremony two weeks ago, and I had a parent come up to me today, and all, two parents actually offered to give personal donations to, to support, so I, I agree. I think they're people who are willing to support us, because they see the value in what we're trying to do.
What about, is the ticket for Hamilton now?
It's seventy-two dollars, that's priced in.
It's priced in? Oh, that's good, that's good. They will enjoy that, I thoroughly.
Is still included in this as well?
Yes, sixty dollars per student is what we budgeted. Without, you know, if they stayed overnight, it would be eighty.
Madam Chair, if it would be appropriate, I would move that we approve the trip with the understanding that they can go ahead and stay overnight if they're able to raise the funds. Can we make a motion that way? Is that, would that be appropriate?
I second the motion.
It has been moved and second that we approve this trip with the understanding that we will raise enough money that you'll be able to spend one night in, in New York. All those in favors, use the usual sign, aye. Any nays? Hearing none, it's approved. See a smile on your face? We have, um, deposit.
Yes, Ms. Benjamin, you received a copy of the policy update, um, for Policy LBD Home Instruction. And as you can see, it's just changing in some of the language from the, um, um, the School Board Association. So we're just asking for us to go ahead and be able to, um, replace the current policy with this new one, and the new change in language, with the exception to what, um, Mr. Walker had brought up previously, we want to add that as well.
You're making that motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, you're making the presentation.
Yes, ma'am, I'm, I'm asking you to.
No, she's not making a motion.
I mean, she's just.
I'm not making a motion, I'm just, I'm recommending that we do that, yes, ma'am. You guys have to make the motion.
I move that we, uh, go ahead and incorporate the, uh, policies that, uh, we have been given ahead of time, with the exception of the wording that Mr. Walker pointed out.
Second. It has been moved and second that we, um, accept the policy update with the, the new wording that, uh, Mr. Walker, um, told us about earlier. All those in favor, use the usual sign. Aye. Any nays? Hearing none. So that's approved. Internet safety?
I was looking at Timothy, I didn't know which one was gonna get up, so.
Good afternoon, board members and Dr. Weston. Mr. Ampe and I are here to provide an overview of proposed revisions to the current internet safety, internet safety policy, and to seek board approval to align the policy with the Virginia Board of Education's updated model policy. All right, the first revision is in the Access to Educational Technology Section in subsection B. Modeling has been added to staff responsibilities to emphasize demonstrating responsible technology use. The next revision also is in the Access to Educational Technology Section, and in subsection C adds that we will use data privacy agreements to protect student data.
We're always looking for, um, vendors that are willing to sign data privacy agreement to protect our students from their data getting out and getting into public. We're always looking, so those vendors are willing to sign those, and we've been able to get like twenty-eight vendors to sign a collaborative data privacy agreements, and we're constantly looking at others that we use and trying to get agreements for them also.
And the last revision is in the Use of Educational Technology Section. And there is a new subsection C, which ensures internet safety practices reference relevant state and local policies, such as those addressing anti-bullying, and anti-discrimination. And those are the three revisions. And we're asking approval of those.
Is this in the student section, or the adult section? Or both?
It's both.
In both?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the internet safety policies.
Second.
It has been moved and second that we accept the internet safety poli- safety policy. All those in favor, use the usual sign. Aye. Hearing any nays? Hearing none. It's approved. We have accepted the internet policy. And we have telehealth grant.
Mr. Garnes.
Oh, Mr. Garnes.
All right. While you're getting that up, greetings to everybody. I'm glad to be here, um, to our board chair, all board members, Dr. Weston, and our student representative, and everyone here. I actually was very excited to see the students, um, tonight. And actually, it was a great springboard for what I am about to, uh, present. So I am here, uh, this e-evening, uh, to provide information regarding a telehealth, mental health grant, um, in order to seek board approval, um, so that we could go forward possibly with the contract. So, the what? We always want to know the what. So we had the opportunity, um, to receive a grant in the amount of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for mental health supports for our students. Before we did that, we had to secure a partner. So our partner is Greater Reach Community Services Board, formerly known as District Nineteen. Services will be provided to middle and high school students. That's kind of where we wanted to start. You know, as a former principal here, um, I did have the unfortunate, I guess, or fortunate opportunity to see the needs of students at that level. So, the why. After speaking to our counselors, especially at the high school, um, they are seeing more need for mental health, and they are actually seeing twenty students a month who fall under Tier Two and Tier Three mental support, mental health supports. So what that means is, those are those tiers that are very serious. They come in, uh, it may be self-harm, it may be a desire to, um, cause harm to self and other things of that nature. So I hate to use this word, we want to use that word, post, the C-word, you know, word I'm talking about. We have seen increases, uh, limited resources. So we are a rural school district, and many times, parents are not able to even make those types of appointments, or get their children to those appointments. So bringing it in virtually to the school, we felt would be another level of support for these children and for our students. So students will be referred by their school counselor. Of course, they must have parent approval. So, uh, Greater Reach will also, uh, work with the parents, provide information. We are also going to set up an informational brochure for parents, so that they can have more information regarding this as well. And they will be there to answer any questions, uh, for those students. So once the counselors have, uh, referred the student, uh, they will get set up with, um, an outpatient therapist and a case manager, who will, uh, provide those supports. We also will have a telehealth facilitator. Now, this person would be a person who sits outside the door in a location that is selected by the school, or in there with the student, according to. or in there with the student according to what the parent desires, just for the extra level of support. My hope is that I can get some retired teachers or retired counselors to serve in that role. Um, and we're gonna, it's up here, but they, they're gonna be able to come in two days a week. This is what we're saying right now. This could change, but as of right now, two days a week, uh, for forty minutes. And the sessions, like I said, will be held virtually. So what is needed, so we're hoping to get five, um, laptops and no Chromebooks per school. So ten total with actually five extra as backup, uh, headsets if needed, two computer carts to hold those, um, items. Uh, network upgrades if needed and cybersecurity tools if needed. Uh, Greater Reach can offer, and these are some other highlights, parent training, which they are going to try to do for us if needed, and some seminars, uh, regarding this type of information and how to help their child at home. Staff training, which I'm really excited about, where it's, they, they can come in and do mental health first aid. So if you see a child kind of veering off i- in the area where they need mental health support or they're having some type of issue in class, they can provide some strategies for our staff members to deal with those childrens, those children immediately. Even translation services, which I really do think, um, you know, those things are important. So data collection, we will be collecting data. We're not going to, uh, focus on who the children are, but what types of things that we are seeing. Because if there, if there is a pattern in our district or something is causing these types of mental health issues, we want to know that so that we can act appropriately and maybe even add on more services as needed. And it's for our review and for our information. I found this and I think this is so, um, fitting, supporting students' mental health isn't, isn't an extra service, it's essential care. When students feel seen, supported and safe, their potential becomes, uh, limitless. Um, I do think this is very important, uh, right now, so I do ask for, um, your support and your approval. And I am open for, uh, questions at this time.
Mr. Garnes, a question I have kind of more revolves around the, I guess, you call the fine print of all of this. There's reference here in your presentation to a two hundred and ninety thousand dollar grant. So I guess I'm trying to understand what the money, like, are we going to get billed by District Nineteen and then we pay them out of that money?
Yes, I did provide a breakdown for you all, for you all, uh, but they will invoice us for those services. And really, it depends on how many referrals we get, which as you see, um, it has increased, so it's a breakdown there for you all.
So if we, if we end up with, uh, more referrals than what two hundred and ninety thousand will cover, are, are we going to limit our, I, I'm just trying to understand, like.
I, I think what will happen, I would have to go back to Greater Reach, they are willing to work with us. Uh, we know what the amount is. We were fortunate enough to be one of the school districts who received it, all school districts did not receive it, there were some who did. Um, it was actually fo- was for three hundred thousand, so we were able to secure two hundred and ninety thousand, which I'm excited about. But, um, through our preliminary meetings, uh, the representative, Ms. Tori White, said she would be able to try to work with us through those types of, um, issues.
If I had to guess, I would guess that it's X number of hours of therapy, so we have, it would be somewhat limited, but I guess that would up to the counselors to select it. Possibly most of your.
And, and, and that's the thing to keep in mind, this is for tier two and tier three support, so serious support. So it's not just we're recommending everybody. And then the other thing is, she shared with me, um, that she would be willing to increase the number of therapists as needed, because I think she started at two and she's already upped it to five, in case.
The grant that you're looking at, does that allow us to purchase these supplies?
Yes, these things are all within the grant.
Okay.
Yes.
And how long is the grant good for?
Well, it's only for this year, um, they did say they are looking at other things. When they put the grant out, you know, it was a bit late, but I felt if we can get it, get it, anything is good for our students that's extra. If, if we can get the extra support right now, um, then we, it's out there, so why not?
And I knew that in some cases we would absolutely have to do it during the school day, but I really would like if there was an option for the child to be approved and they give them a code and whatever, and the parents approve it, you know, it could, could occur after school or at home or.
I wish she could have been here, she did bring that up to me during our preliminary meeting.
Because we're under such a constraint about missing classes right now.
And she's trying to make sure that they're not taken out during, um, you know, their heavy content area classes. And you know, of course, you know too, Ms. Pittman, as a principal, when those things happen, it doesn't matter the class.
I know.
They go up there and things come out and things happen, so we just want to make sure that level of support is there.
Right, well, I, these levels, tier two and three, I mean, you have to do it no matter where you have to do it, I mean, it's important, but um, a- a- as they go through the therapy and they're accepted and have a relationship with the therapist, I was wondering if it was, you know, possible for them to do it at four o'clock or five o'clock at home or something.
And so what I did, um, I didn't finish, I'm sorry, she did say that if there is a need, they would definitely try to do that for us. They're very accommodating because they understand, um, the school level needs and the, uh, you know, the work levels of the students. Want to make sure their work is done and, and they're getting those things done. So she wanted to be, um, as least disruptive as she could possibly be, but of course, when things happen, sometimes a child can come to the council's office and starts off one thing and then you realize there is a bigger need and there is a greater need. So, um, she's willing to try to work with us. She will be coming back to have more meetings, um, you know, with us, um, if it's approved.
I hope would be that, um, you know, even as the grant funding and all dries up, that, you know, this could become a permanent fixture almost, you know, for many years. I, I would anticipate that many students would be very excited about this, I know I would have been. The only question that I do have is about the parent approval component. Only reason I have a question about that is because I know that, um, I mean, we, we want parents to know everything that they, you know, um, approve, which is pretty much everything. But at the same time, I, I know that there are certain conversations that students are just afraid to have with a parent, especially concerning mental health and, you know, trying to get that, excuse me, the approval for the services may be difficult, especially, you know, I'm thinking of even with particular demographics. Speaking as a black man, I know that, you know, in our community, talking about mental health and medications, anything like that is taboo. So, you know, what would we be able to do for a student who is interested in this service? Their friends are telling them, hey, yeah, I, you know, I spoke to a therapist, psychiatrist, what have you, on the telehealth and it really worked and, and they're wanting to do it, but they, you know, are not able to get that parental approval or just aren't seeking it out.
So what will happen, um, the representatives will kind of try to help the parents understand that, because they're, when they do the presentation with the parent, all those things fall into their presentation. So they try to make sure that the parents definitely understand that. It has been my experience luckily that when those things happen, parents want it. And, but I definitely understand what you're saying. It's, it's truly about the training too for the parent, because sometimes parents don't know what they don't know. But I definitely understand that, but she did say, um, during the presentation and seminars with the parents and the private consultation with the parents, she will break that information down for them, um, because there are cases.
Parents just approving the therapy, they're not inter- they're not.
Yeah, they're intervening, and I want to, right, and I want to say this too. I want to say this too, Mr. Brown, a lot of it comes from it being virtual, because you know, there's some things there, they want to make sure that, you know, even, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure they approve that.
Yeah. Right.
So I just want to make sure other students that may have similar upbringing, that at least they get the resources they need, because God forbid, something happens.
We cannot service them if the parents.
And I think too, because, um, there's an age factor there also, that's some of it as well, because of their other age, yeah.
Mr. Garnes, I do have a copy of the grant in front of me and there is a, a large, um, part of the grant in which you are spending time with parents, um, around seminars and, um, things of that nature with spending a lot of time with parents and helping to educate parents.
And I was.
Sometimes I think it's the fear of the, you know, like I don't want my child to sit in front of, what is my child going to say? So sometimes it's just educating them.
And hopefully, I miss it's approved, we will go around to some of the community events and, uh, share some of this information as well.
I think there would be an overwhelming, there's an overwhelming need for it, but I think there'd be an overwhelming, welcoming, this service to, I think.
We're very fortunate to receive.
Try every avenue to get to parents.
So you said, uh, can you remind me of the number of Chromebooks that will have to.
So total fifteen, because five per school and then they wanted to have an extra buffer set just in case something, you know, happened to those, uh, computers.
It's just secondary schools.
Yeah, just secondary.
And you're saying two days a week, forty minute sessions.
Yes, and that could change, based on kind of, you know, this is like our preliminary stuff to see where we are and see what we need, but those were the, uh, days that, uh, she recommended as, you know, the health professional.
So we have more than, you know, let's say maybe we get six students at the high school that are, you know, wanting to do this.
Right.
So are we just, are we going to use technology elsewhere for this?
If we have to, we may have to purchase more, so it's kind of, um, what am I trying to say? It's fluid a little bit there, so, um, we, yeah, yeah, yeah. Because it's new, sometimes we don't know what we don't know either until we get started, but at least, you know, it's there for us to start if, you know, we have this, uh, approved.
Well, Madam Chair, I, I believe that we, uh, approved the telehealth grant contract as presented.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we approve the telehealth grant contract. All those in favor, use the usual sign, aye, other in the nays, here and none. The telehealth grant contract is approved and thank you, Mr. Garnes, for the work you have done with this. VPSA reimbursement resolution.
Greetings, board members and Dr. Weston. I'm seeking board approval for VPSA reimbursement. This grant provides for many of the students' technology, the Chromebooks and also the SOT, SOL readiness. And the total amount is two thousand, I mean, two hundred and thirty-two thousand.
We, we receive these grant funds, uh, from the State Department every year. And so part of that work is say, before we spend the money, we have to get approval to be able to spend it, and that's what this resolution is for.
It's just a formality.
It's a formality, every year we have to go through this.
I move that we approve the VPSA reimbursement resolution number, VPSA twenty-five twenty-six.
Second.
It has moved in second that we approve the VPSA reimbursement solution number, uh, VPSA twenty-five twenty-six. All those in favor, use the usual sign, aye, in the nays, here and none, it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, is there any new business?
No, there's no new business, Madam Chair.
There is no new business, Superintendent Matters?
Yes, I'd like to have Ms. Peters come forward, she's going to provide us with an overview, um, with exceptional education. You know, there's always a lot of questions about why does things take so long and, you know, what's happening in special education. So she's going to provide sort of a brief overview of that process tonight.
Alright, well, good afternoon, um, board members and Dr. Weston. Um, I'm here this afternoon to share an overview of special education with you all. And like Dr. Weston said, you know, as board members, you often field questions from parents in regards to special education, but to my knowledge, none of you have a degree in special education. So you're trying to answer questions about things you don't necessarily know all the answers to. So hopefully by being able to provide you, um, you know, some high-level knowledge, this will help you in some of those conversations. But just remember, you know, I'm always here to answer those more specific questions and help you guys out with that as well. Nope, I went too far. Yeah, I got it. I was like, wait, it went too far. So these are just kind of the high-level things that we're going to talk about, um, just understanding special education, special education law basics, student discipline, assessment, grades and graduation, dispute resolution and students with disabilities, and then some of the things that fall under your role as a board member. Um, and the majority of this information does come from, um, a book that our Council of Administrators of Special Education and Council for Exceptional Children puts out, um, that is specific for board members. It's just a really small booklet, um, that's very helpful, so if that's something that you guys are interested in, um, I'm sure I could work with Dr. Weston to get those for you as well. So when it comes to special education, all children that are eligible for special education must be provided with what we call a free and appropriate public education. So we use a lot of, um, acronyms in special education, so we call this FAP. There are no exceptions, um, so it doesn't matter if it's a student with severe disabilities, if the budget is tight, like, none of that matters. We have to provide those services to students if they're found eligible. So it's important for you guys to have that working knowledge of the laws and regulations, because again, you know, you're having to approve expenditures and things like that that relate to these students that we're serving. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which is IDEA, is where, is what guarantees that FAP for every student with a disability. The next point here, I think, is important for people to understand that just because a child has a disability does not automatically mean that they receive special education. We have a lot of students walking around in our schools that have disabilities, but they don't necessarily need that specially designed instruction. So to be eligible for special education, a student has to have a disability that meets one of the categories and they also have to have that need for specially designed instruction. So it's what we call like a two-pronged approach. Um, and then sometimes we have students that may only need accommodations and those can be provided through what we call a Section 504 plan. Like I said, um, the services are mandated by both federal and state laws. Once a child is found eligible, again, the district has to find a way to provide those services. Sometimes some of those expenditures that we see are sizable. You know, when we think about a student who may need a one-to-one support or they have, um, significant amounts of equipment that are required that they need when they're at school, things like that. Something else that we are working on currently, um, just in my short time here as I've reviewed IEPs and things like that, is that we really have to write our IEPs and our services based on the individual needs of the student. We can't just look at the disability category. Okay, this child qualifies under SLD, so we're going to automatically give them these services. We really have to hone back and look at what are the actual needs of the child. Something else, when you're speaking with parents, it's important to use that person-first language, and I'll give you an example of that later. Something else to think about is in Virginia, parents have to give consent for everything in special education. So in some states, it's just that initial evaluation and that initial IEP, but in Virginia, it is parent consent across the board for everything that we do in special education. The eligibility process part, I don't think I have this timeline on here, but it is sixty-five days from, um, when that referral is submitted that we have to complete all the evaluations and then hold the eligibility meeting to re- um, review all of those evaluations and determine if the child's eligible. And then once a child is found eligible, then the team has thirty calendar days to write the individual education plan or the IEP. Um, and the sixty-five day timeline is business days, which you would think that business days would relate to, okay, school's in session, so those are our business days, but it does not. Business days continue counting even if we're not in school because they only subtract out federal holidays. So we have to look at, okay, if we have a child who, you know, has been referred, we've got to be able to include the timeline over Thanksgiving break, except for Thanksgiving Day, over Christmas break, except for, you know, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, those kinds of things. So we have to be thinking ahead to, when do we actually have to schedule this meeting? Because our timeline keeps ticking even though we're not at school. So there's some tricky things and especially when we start talking about business days versus calendar days versus all those things. Um, and then like I said, some students may require some additional services. Some of them might need specialized transportation. Sometimes we have kids that need speech-language services, occupational therapy, um, physical therapy, or sometimes they may, may need that specific, you know, behavioral aid or one-to-one aid with them. Something else, um, that sometimes we don't remember is that all students with disabilities have to participate in state assessments. So even though they're, you know, they have challenges, obviously they need support, but they still have to participate. And then we do have a small percentage of students who are going to take what we call an alternate assessment. So in Virginia, that's the WAP assessment. That percentage is supposed to be less than one percent. And I will tell you, um, I just completed our report for this year and we are finally below one percent participating in an alternate assessment. Part of that is because of some of the changes of the requirements with the WAP. Something else to consider is special education is not a place, it is the services that the student requires that gives them the access to make progress in their education. Most students don't have a physical disability, so if you were to walk through any of our buildings, you wouldn't necessarily know which students actually have disabilities. Some of them do have physical disabilities that are, you know, they're visible when you look at a child, but for the most part, you would not know, um, unless you were interacting and, you know, supporting them educationally. Most students are educated in the general ed classroom, um, while some students do require something like a separate location, sometimes a special school, um, you know, sometimes we have students that are in private day schools, things like that. But for the most part, most of them are going to be educated in our general education classrooms. This next piece is something that we are working on, is that all teachers and staff need training on how to support students with disabilities in the classroom. When we think about a general education teacher, in order to get their licensure, if, if you've gone through a traditional prep program, you may have had one introductory class in special education. But then we also think about the number of teachers that are provisionally licensed or that are, you know, they were not a teacher by trade or whatever. They don't have that knowledge and background of how to support these students, but they're expected to teach every day with these students in their classrooms. So we are trying to work on, how do we meet those needs of the training requirements that a teacher needs? One of the most litigated areas of special education is the lack of progress that children make. So when we think about, how do we monitor their progress on their goals that are on their IEPs and things like that? Our state does provide a statewide system for IEPs. This year, they added in a module for tracking progress on IEP goals. So that is something that we're doing a slow rollout this year so that we have a tool for the teachers to actually use to track the progress on those goals. As we all know, there is a nationwide shortage of special education teachers. And like I said, a lot of those teachers are provisionally licensed with no experience in supporting students with disabilities. But that being said, whether a teacher is just starting in their career or they're a veteran teacher, they are held to the same standard as far as what's expected of them and that legal standard of providing for a child. So it's important that we figure out what kind of training do they need so we, so that they're supported. And then, information about students with disabilities, as is with any student, we've got to make sure that we keep that information confidential. This next part, we're going to kind of go briefly over some of the special education law basics. Special education is defined by federal law, the IDEA, and that does supersede the state law and regulations as well as our local policies and procedures. Some of the things that we're going to focus on include child find, non-discriminatory evaluations, FAP, IEPs, LRE, which is the least restrictive environment, related services, parent participation, and confidentiality. So with child find, all school districts are required to proactively seek out and identify every eligible student with a disability living within the division. So currently, the way that most divisions handle that is they do have a notice on their website. So we do have that under our special education part of our website. And then specifically, for our younger children, those two-year-olds to five-year-olds, we do hold a couple of days during the school year, usually one in September, one in January, where we have parents sign up for appointments. They bring their children in to go through a screening process to determine if they do need to be evaluated for potential for special education. When we think about the evaluations that are completed, they do have to be non-discriminatory. And the evaluation reports have to describe the unique needs of the child, how that disability adversely affects them, and then any recommendations for programs and services. So that's all part of that eligibility process. The IEP, again, is tailored to meet the individual needs of the student, and there are required members who must be at the meeting. That includes parent, general ed teacher, special education teacher, an LEA rep, LEA rep, which is the Local Education Association. Typically, in our division, that would be a principal or assistant principal, but they also may have a designee in their building, such as a counselor or something like that. And there also needs to be someone who can interpret the evaluation results. And then, at the secondary level, too, a lot of times, we include the child, especially if we're talking about transition. FAP is services that have to be provided at no cost to the student or family. Education must allow the student to make progress in the curriculum, and it is based on their individual needs. Something to think about, though, is appropriate does not mean the best possible services. So we have to figure out, how are we leveling that playing field? But that doesn't always mean that that's the best. And we do, thanks to a 2017 Supreme Court decision called the Andrew F. decision, we do have to make sure that students are making adequate progress in light of their circumstances. So prior to that Supreme Court decision, it was what we called de minimis, which meant that it was like the bare minimum, like, students only had to make minimum progress. Whereas now, we have to look at, is there progress in relation to their circumstances? And again, we are responsible for providing FAP for any student within the boundaries of our division. With LRE, which is that least restrictive environment, we want to make sure that students are educated with their non-disabled peers to the maximum extent possible and that we're only considering those separate settings or classrooms if every method has been tried in the general education setting. So we don't want to jump from, okay, they were in general ed, and now we're going to put them all the way over here in, you know, a private day school or a separate school or whatever. We've got to make sure that we've worked along that continuum to try to support their needs. Related services, I've kind of mentioned some of these before, but specialized transportation. If a student is unable to access the traditional school bus, then they may be offered specialized transportation. Typically, we look at more of like those students with physical disabilities, but there could be other factors that would cause them to need specialized transportation. Typically, a special transportation vehicle has less students on it, and it will typically have an aide as well. Other related services, again, include speech-language, OTPT counseling or medical support. We always want parent participation. We want them to be viewed as equal participants in that process. We want them to have opportunities to participate in that process. And again, like I said, parental permission is required. They also have to have access to the records. Confidentiality, just making sure, you know, when a parent's reaching out to you with questions or whatever, just thinking about how you're keeping that information confidential. It cannot be shared outside of the IEP team. So we always talk about, like, when we're in a meeting, what happens in that meeting, like, that's, those are the people that need to know, because those are the people most directly related to that student. You know, we, of course, share with teachers the accommodations that a student needs and things like that, but they don't need to know everything. But if, you know, if an issue arises and somebody does have to contact you, you know, make sure you reach out either to myself or Dr. Claire or Dr. Weston, and we can help you with those questions. And then, I know I mentioned Section 504. Again, this is students who have a disability that don't require specially-designed instruction but may require some accommodations to be able to be successful in school. Section 504 does protect those qualified individuals from discrimination based on their disability. Some of the most common disabilities that are served under Section 504 include ADHD, anxiety, and diabetes. And something else to think about is, Section 504 is not actually the responsibility of special education. It is a general education process. In Dimity County, my office does do that initial eligibility for a Section 504 plan, but then after that, it is the responsibility of the counselors in the building. Some schools use assistant principals, like, it's a variety of things, but it is a general education process. When we think about special education law, we do receive federal funding to support some of the positions in our district that, for teachers in paras in special education. As a condition of that, we have to ensure that all students with disabilities receive FAP. The state agencies then monitor the local school divisions, send the federal money, making sure that we do implement all the processes and procedures. The local school division is responsible for complying with all of the regulations. And then we, as a division, develop policies and procedures for what specifically we're doing here. I will just say, we are currently under VDOE compliance monitoring this year. It's part of a five-year cycle, so this happens to be our year where they are reviewing our policies, our procedures, our files, things like that. And part of that is that fiscal side, to make sure that the funding that we're using, that we're using it for what it's meant for. ESY, which is Extended School Year versus Summer School. So these are separate things. Sometimes people will use these terms intertwined or entangled or whatever. ESY can be provided anytime we have an extended break. So it's not just summer break. It could be the upcoming Thanksgiving break, because that's more than just a typical weekend. It could be the upcoming winter break, anything like that. But in order for a child to qualify for extended school year services, we have to look at, are they regressing in those skills that they've been working on? So we can't be working on teaching new skills during ESY. We have to look at what skills may they have lost when there's been an extended break. All right. This is the part that you guys probably get to deal with sometimes. Student discipline, so anytime a student with a disability gets in trouble, they can be disciplined up to ten school days without us having to provide services. But if we exceed ten school days, then we have to look at what happened. We have to hold what's called a manifestation determination review meeting to determine if what happened was caused by their disability or if it was because we had failed to implement their IEP. Something else that may have to happen is, sometimes kids may get in trouble, and it's only for a couple of days at a time. But then they approach that cumulative ten days. Again, if we're going to exceed ten days, we do what's called a pattern analysis, where we look at the different behaviors, we look at the length of each removal, we look at the total number, how close in the calendar were they? Like, if I have a kid who got in trouble in August, and they don't get in trouble again until April, it's probably not a pattern. But if they're getting in trouble every week, we may have a pattern of behaviors happening. So like I said, after we've exceeded ten days, so on that eleventh day, we do have to provide services. So typically, what we do is, if there is some sort of behavioral infraction and we have to provide services, we do that through a home-based manner, where we amend the IEP to reflect that the child's going to be home-based for whatever the period of time is for the disciplinary action. And then we assign a teacher to support with home-based instruction during that time. They continue to complete their work, either through, you know, the admentum platform or through their teachers providing that work, but then we support that with instruction. Like I said, the MDR meeting, we're answering those questions. Either was it related to or caused by the disability or was it because we failed to implement the IEP? And if a behavior is found to be a manifestation, the team then does connect, conducts what's called a functional behavior assessment or an FBA, and they would implement a behavior intervention plan. Or if one's already in place, they're going to want to review that, make any modifications to it if needed. If it's not found as a manifestation, which a lot of them are not, then the school division can proceed with disciplining the student the same as they would a general ed student. And then, of course, there are those extreme cases where we can make the decision to unilaterally remove a student with a disability if there's incidents of weapons, substances, or inflicting serious bodily injury. And in that case, we can remove them up to forty-five school days. When it comes to assessment, all students do participate in those state assessments. Like I said, if they need to participate in an alternate curriculum, they also have to be doing an alternate assessment. The WAP criteria has pushed a lot of our students out into the general education classroom that were not previously out in those settings. So when we look at our staffing and everything, we've had to figure out how to shift staffing to support those needs, how do we shift the schedule, things like that, to make it work. As far as grading, in case you get questions on grading, there are no federal guidelines on grading procedures. If an IEP team does need to make a decision about anything with modified grades or things like that, they would want to make sure to include input from the teacher. When it comes to graduation for students with IEPs, most students will graduate with, either in Virginia, a standard or advanced diploma. We do have a limited number of students who do graduate with an applied studies diploma. But the one concern with that is it does place limits on what the student is able to do after high school, because it is not viewed as an actual, you know, high school diploma or a general, you know, a GED equivalency or anything like that. But the state has put a lot of credit accommodations in place to try to ensure that as many students as possible can graduate with a standard diploma. So we have two avenues with that. We have the locally awarded verified credits, where a child scores between three seventy-five and three ninety-nine on an SOLO, although that will probably be changing with the change in cut scores. And they do have to take that assessment twice. Or there's also the special permission locally awarded verified credit, where if they score below a three seventy-four, they only have to take the assessment once, and then the case manager writes a justification statement, and that has to be submitted to the Department of Ed for review. Something else that unfortunately, sometimes, we experience in special education is dispute resolution. But VDOE does offer a variety of ways to work through those disputes. They offer facilitated IEPs, which I will say, we have used that for a few of our families, and it's been very productive and helpful. So if, you know, for instance, there's been multiple IEP meetings, there's no resolution, before things really start to get heated, we reach out to the Department of Ed and say, hey, we've got this situation. We would like to seek a facilitator to help us work through this process. They participate in the meeting. They kind of help answer questions and keep the meeting moving so that we can come to some sort of collaborative decision. There's also mediation. This is when there is a true difference between the school and the parent. And it puts a neutral party into the mix, helps with that negotiation. In this case, it does not always include the whole IEP team. There are also state complaints. It's an alleged procedural violation and can be filed by anyone. We did have one that was filed last school year, but thankfully, our team was on top of it. We were able to handle it before it even got to the State Department. So that one was closed out pretty quickly. There can be due process hearings, but parents and school districts are the only parties that can file those. It has to be related to the identification, evaluation, educational placement, or provision of FAP for a student with a disability. These can become very costly, very time-consuming, and can be very contentious. And the hearing officer's decision is legally binding in those cases. There's also something called the Office of Civil Rights, the OCR, which a parent could file a complaint under. We've also had one of those that we've worked through just in my short time here that was, had happened prior to me being here. But again, we were able to work through that with the family. So when we think about your role as a school board member, it's important for you to consider the impacts on students with disabilities when it comes to the division's visions and goals. How will the division support the continuous improvements to maximize those outcomes and experiences for all students? When you're making policy decisions, make sure that you're asking yourself the question, what does this mean for our students with disabilities or our students who are eligible for special education? And then also, of course, when it comes to budgeting. Special education is funded from a variety of places. It's local, state, and federal funds. Like I said, those services are mandated, so we have to provide them, and we have to figure out how we're going to provide them, even when the budget's tight. And cutting money for special education does not relieve us of our obligation to provide those services. It could put us at risk of not meeting our maintenance of effort, our MOE. And I can tell you, Ms. Fleming, and I do not want to deal with that. It is the expectation that we will not decrease the money that is spent, that we, you know, meet that same level that's been put into place. But there are, of course, always exceptions that can be applied. If we, for instance, have a retired, a teacher that retires, and we replace them, of course, with a lower-paid teacher, that's an exception. If you have a decrease in enrollment, if you have a high-needs student that leaves your division. So there's things that, you know, the state has put into place to factor into that calculation when it comes to MOE. And then I did mention this earlier, so using that person-first language. So referring to the child first, so a child with autism, not an autistic child. It just, you know, it helps that parent realize that you do recognize that it's a child first. Again, that confidentiality in all situations. Making sure that, you know, when you are asked questions, please help us out by not making any promises or commenting on the situation. Again, because you may not know the whole picture of what's happening or whatever, you know, let us help with that process from our office. And then, of course, following up with the appropriate personnel if there is a concern. All right. That was a lot of information really fast. Any questions that anybody has? You're welcome. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Ms. Benjamin and board members, we do have one update to Policy GAB AI. Is that going to be? Betty, Carley?
Okay. Good afternoon again. Okay, so Ms. Wolfok and I are here to share the ongoing work of the Artificial Intelligence Committee and provide an overview of regulations guiding AI use, including district-approved resources, staff and student guardrails, and ongoing professional development. At this time, the committee has approved the following AI resources for staff and then the following resources for students in grade six through twelve. Data privacy, ease of use, quality, and variety of outputs were used to approve the current resources and will continue to guide the evaluation of future tools. We have also established staff guardrails to guide the use of AI resources. These guardrails focus on using AI safely, responsibly, and ethically, protecting personal information, ensuring AI supports learning, verifying outputs for accuracy, bias, and appropriateness, providing explicit instructions for student use, and acknowledging AI contributions. We have also established student guardrails which align with the same guidelines used for staff. We have also established student guardrails which align with the same guidelines used for staff. Ongoing professional development in education will be provided. Staff training on the information that is being presented today will take place between November and January. Students will receive education on this information between December and February. Training will continue throughout the year as new AI resources and tools evolve. And the AI committee is also participating in a variety of professional development opportunities to help us lead this work.
I'll show my ignorance with this question, but... So we have selected an AI tool that we are allowing students and teachers to use in their educational efforts.
Correct.
But do we have anything that helps detect if they've used something else?
So we have not approved...
Which is hard, I realize.
Yeah, we have not approved an AI detector.
Yet, okay.
I think there's so many instances of inaccuracy that, yeah, so we do not have that.
Somebody will come up with one eventually, I guess.
There are some out there.
There are some, but they're just...
We haven't picked one yet.
Any other questions? Right, yeah, Deladeo, which is the resource that the Stampede has, is using. We can tell, like if students log into any type of AI, type, say, ChatGPT or for say...
Deladeo is very sensitive to... Tells you everything about...
We use a tool at the high school with the, especially the teachers for papers, and they, there's a tool that they can detect when things aren't referenced correctly and all that. I kind of would assume that AI might be incorporated in that at some point.
So we do have a program called Turn It In, but it is not actually an AI tool, but it used AI algorithms to help, you know, guide that. But that is not always necessarily like one hundred percent correct.
There's a software committee that I think that you're going to be, they're going to be, make a recommendation to the software committee, and then you all will determine what will be one we use at the school district.
One we select, okay.
And we've got some upcoming training that we're really excited about attending. I know that there are four of us attending a training Thursday with quite a few other divisions in Virginia, where we'll be working with Adam Gary, who is, has really helped us with a lot of our AI work a couple of years ago. And then next Monday, several of the AI committee members will be attending an AI conference in Williamsburg, which is focused all around education and using AI.
Well, on one hand, you know, we need to stay one step ahead of people using it inappropriately. But on the other hand, I got a feeling that as we move forward, then that we're teaching them how to use the tools that are out there.
Right.
And so you wouldn't want to take the approach that we're banning it.
Correct.
We need to take the approach that it's a tool that they might be...
Are we looking at any training for our teachers on how to use it responsibly? Because rather than looking over their shoulder and saying, you can't use this, I think we have to embrace it at some point.
And that, I mean, that training, we actually started AI training last year. And then it's just, we'll continue on. Actually, the middle school had one yesterday. And we'll, you know, it will just be an ongoing training. It's not something that will stop and say, we've done, but it'll be ongoing. And as Ms. Wolfok was saying, the, also, it's built into our secondary standards. The English standards. As well as our digital literacy as well.
It doesn't require approval, they just wanted to bring up the speed about where they were.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Code RVA and Maggie Walker. I did attend Code RVA meeting back in October. And if any of you've been to the Code RVA meetings, you know, they move very fast. The president get, the chair gets it over with real quick. So the main thing where, this time that they may have some spaces available, we have to, we have to inquire about the space that's available. And the chair there at RVA is always writing or looking for grants to help the students. And we're going back early, I believe we're going to have a meeting in January, this of twenty-six, which we normally won't go back, I think, until February. But she wants to get started on the budget real early. So that's what they're doing at RVA. And at Code, I mean, at Maggie Walker, we have a new, a new leader there. And we had thirty-nine students there to pass the National Merit Scholarship Test, which is a great success. And the Fall Festival they had was a great success. They raised eighteen thousand dollars. The alumni came back and they had vendors and all that type of thing. And this year, they had the homecoming dance on the field. And that was a great success, and everyone seemed to have enjoyed that. And they're still recruiting for the class of twenty thirty. So we may can get some more students in there, they're going that far ahead to twenty thirty. So that's my report for Maggie Walker and Code RVA. And the next, we have Citizens Report, we have Mr. Scott, is that Coonfield? Is it Coonfield?
Yes, 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 it is.
Good evening. They can read this? You're going to read it?
Somebody should just read first, I believe.
Down the bottom.
The Dinwiddie County School Board highly values public input.
Did she read all of that or just this? The last paragraph.
Just the last paragraph.
The board ensures that public participation at any specially-called meeting of the school board is fair and respectful. Upon recommendation of the board chair, public hearings and forums are typically designed to receive substantial community input and individual comment. Sign-up sheets will be made available at each door for those attending who wish to address the board. Time limits will usually be set for each speaker to ensure everyone can address the board. Typically, each speaker will be allotted five minutes during public hearings and forums rather than three minutes during the public address portion of the regular meeting. Upon recognition by the chairman, the speaker shall address himself to the chairman and give us your name and your address. And you may begin.
Thank you. My name is Scott Coonfield. Did you say my address? Okay, I've got a few. One zero one eight seven Squirrel Level Road. First of all, on this Veterans Day, I just wanted to say thank you to all the service members and their families, of which I am a part, and so is my father. So I appreciate everything you all have done, your dedication to the country's service. God bless you. So the reason I'm here today is because, well, quick background. I am a proud graduate of Dinwiddie Elementary, Dinwiddie Middle, and Class of eighty-eight High School. So fifty years ago or so, my father decided to raise his family here because they were good people, good schools, and a simpler country life. He's a retired Army Colonel. He passed away this year, but he was in charge of the Second Battalion at Fort Lee, so about two thousand soldiers under his control. Not quite like a school, but probably not too far. But when I think back about my school days, I don't recall having some of the issues that I'm hearing about my extended family experiencing now with regard to some of the bus reliability. And so what I'd like to do for you all is provide you with a record of the delays that we've experienced. And they range, and this is just over the last thirty days, right? So these are some of the text notifications that we've collected. And I just don't recall having this problem when I was younger. I'm talking about an hour and a half, an hour. It really is shocking. And I know that you all want to fix it. I'm curious to hear what your solutions are. And frankly, my dad used to say, if you're not part of the solution, you must be part of the problem. And so if there's something I can do to help resolve this, I'd like to know. So with your permission, I'd like to submit this log.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that okay?
Yes.
I would just like you to know that I'm going to have Mr. Walters follow up with you after the, after the meeting or whatever's available, you know, whenever, whenever you're available. I'd like to speak to you specifically about your concerns, so...
I'd have to give you my contact information, I don't think I've written that anywhere.
Yeah, so just a phone number or some way to, what's the best way to contact you, that'd be great. Yeah, okay, that's Mr. Walters, he's the follow-up, he was already on it, so...
It's Crystal Short.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Crystal Short. I am the proud mother of Sophia Lefoun, which is a seventh grader of Dinwiddie Middle School. I have been a lifelong resident of Squirrel Level Road, seventy-eight, twenty, and eight thousand two, and I am a proud graduate of Dinwiddie High School of two thousand and three. I am a full-time nurse working Monday through Friday alongside of my neighbors, which is the ones sitting beside me. And, you know, I totally understand the situation, and I know people have to reside when they have to. And I have also reached out to the bus garage two times now, and I have talked to Mr. Tucker himself about this difficult situation. My biggest concern to date is the transportation, not only on Squirrel Level Road District, but other districts as well. As I understand everything that is going on, and it affects not only the staff members, bus drivers, it also affects the academics of the students. For the last three weeks, we have not had a set schedule for the bus schedule. And it is not only hard for me, but it is also hard for the other residents on Squirrel Level Road, for our work schedules, and people that also have to take care of their elderly parents. I am coming to you all today to see if there is some type of help with scheduling, maybe if we could even get two days a week of knowing that the bus is coming on Monday and Tuesday for Squirrel Level Road, Wednesday, Thursday for Quaker, or whatever other road needs help with. If there's anything I can do to help, I would gladly, you know, try to help the best way I can. Also, maybe try to recruit other bus drivers from other counties until you can find a permanent replacement. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Walters will follow up with you also. Thank you. Board members' comments? Jason?
There we go. No comments from me pertaining to the main portion of our meeting, but we definitely have the right people in the right places to be able to help you all out and assist this. So, you know, Mr. Coonfield and Ms. Short, thank you for coming, and your neighbors as well for speaking on this. I'm always excited to see people from the community attending these meetings. So we'll be here to help, we're always about the kids, and not only just the kids, but, you know, their parents and their families. So I understand, you know, with your work schedules and, you know, anything else that may be going on and other students that you have in the home, you know, this is a concern. And I want you to know that your concern is our concern, and it's personally my concern as well. So Mr. Walters, you know, and the rest of our team here, we're more than happy to help out. And, you know, there's so many different ideas and solutions that, you know, we've come up with. We've had hearings on them, may have not been supported by the community. So we're now in that, you know, follow-up phase, but I think there's more information that can be given to you there. So I don't want you all to think that it's just going to end here, you know, we do need to find a solution. And I'm thankful that you all are willing to be a part of that solution with us.
Yeah, I too share your concern. We're banging our heads against the wall trying to figure out something. And we have to figure out something because you're absolutely right. When a child is late to school, they miss academics. And it's, it's becoming a ripple effect throughout our system trying to deal with transportation. So we are concerned and working on it, but we haven't got a solution yet, we're still working on it. I also want to thank Ms. Anderson and teachers like Ms. Anderson that have taken their personal time to organize that group going to New York. And we have plenty of teachers that do those, that sort of thing. But those trips and experiences are so important to students. And they learn so much more outside of the classroom than we do inside the classroom. So I'm happy that we have staff that are willing to do that. And the other thing I'm excited about is the mental health opportunities that we have. It is, it's a drastic need in our school system and in our society. And to get it so that a child could have access to it, you know, through the school. And many parents can't afford it, and a lot of insurances don't cover it. So I'm happy we're embarking on that. So thank you for that grant opportunity.
I just, again, want to thank the folks that came to speak about the bus situation tonight. And I don't know, sometimes our meetings are long and arduous and meticulous. And it's almost burdensome to sit through all of that just to get three minutes. And so I appreciate the fact that you were committed to this enough to say, hey, I'll sit through all that stuff that I don't even know or understand anything about. And I know Ms. Pittman and Mr. Brown both alluded to it. This has been an ongoing problem, and I'm not sure if everyone knows all the work that's been done. We did have hearings last year, Mr. Walters. And what I appreciate about Mr. Walters is he has said to us numerous times, if we have a problem, we can't just ignore the problem, we have to do so. So he has actively sought solutions. And the solution that was presented, the community didn't embrace it. But to his credit, he is, he has not given up, I know that for a fact. Unfortunately, sometimes I think we face problems that the answers aren't obvious to. But, you know, I want to give you my word that I'm committed to trying everything I can to help, and we won't drop the issue. Because at the end of the day, you deserve to know that your kids are safe and that they're in school when they're supposed to be in school. So thank you again for being here and for waiting that long to just to share that, so I appreciate you.
I would like to also thank you for appearing before the board and bringing this information. It is so much more effective this way than if you post it on Facebook and just get a lot of people wanting to jump on board and agree with you, but there are no solutions. The people out there on Facebook have no solutions. So hopefully, we can work out something that will be beneficial. But I really appreciate your coming, I thought the special ad update was fantastic. I really am up on this artificial intelligence, I've been working with it. It is amazing what it will do, you can write a little message and then tell it to fluff it. But thank you.
Thank you, board members. Thank everyone for coming, thank you to the residents of Squirrel Level Road and the students who were here prior to earlier. Thank my special guests for coming, they surprised me. And I just thank everyone. Dinwiddie is a great place to be, it's a great place to work. And Mr. Coonfield, I want you to know that I beat you here nineteen forty-six. So anyway, it is a good place to work and play. So you're in the right place for help, you're in the right place to send your students to school because we have the right people in place and the right people who care. And we thank you, and Jake?
Good afternoon. I forgot to mention earlier when the Southside students were here, but it was amazing to see such a multitude and variety of students. I don't think we've ever had that many students here representing the school. So that was amazing to hear what they were doing to enhance their skill set as a school. But also, I'd like to thank Mr. Garance for what he's doing with the telehealth. I think that that's a resource that many school districts do not have. And I'm tending to see more mental health struggles with students, either with bullying or just school stress. So I think that is really a beneficial thing to our community. And I think that through the parent collaboration on that with the seminars that you mentioned and everything, that'll be a good encouraging factor to get the students to really seek that help. And to close it, I just, I'm looking forward to our VSPA workshop next week, thank you.
I want to start by saying that I've been really taken by, Dinwiddie Elementary School has a, up on their board, the marquee in the front, it says gratitude changes everything. So that's kind of been in my, you know, I've just been thinking about that a lot. So I would like to start by thanking Mr. Coonfield and Ms. Short for your comments tonight. I want you to know that they will not fall on deaf ears. We have, we do have an amazing team here. Transportation has been a, we call them opportunities, it, we're just trying to figure out how to make it work. We have lost a number of drivers recently and who are no longer working with us. We have an aging workforce. So we just, we have, you know, we do have some challenges in front of us. But I will tell you that we have an amazing team of people, Mr. Walters is leading, doing amazing work down there. So we're committed to find... So we're committed to finding a solution to that and to what we have going on. So thank you for your feedback. I'd like to thank Carly and Jamie. Industry Day was phenomenal. To see that you had new people there this year, so had a lot of opportunity to sit in those sessions and to hear about different industries, and the kids were very excited and very engaged in the process. And I saw a little smile on Carly's face as she saw the Southside kids because they're going to be really ready when they get to high school, having seen what they're already preparing for at the elementary level. But thank you and Jamie because it just seems like every year it gets better and better, just the opportunities that our young people have to stand in front of our industry partners and to really just start exploring careers and to talk about what it is that they'd like to do after they graduate. And I'd just like to close with, you know, because gratitude changes everything. It is a, it is such an honor and a blessing to get to work with each of and every one of you and with the principals and the teachers and the people that are on the front line. So we have a phenomenal team here at Dinwiddie County Public Schools. And I hope that everyone in this room can go back then and make sure that your staff and your teams, your teachers, your school nutrition staff, your maintenance team, that they do feel valued in this important season. So make sure that you take extra special care of them this month, and do enjoy the time that you're going to get that the board has given you to spend time with your own families, making memories with your own families for that weekend in Denver. So I hope you all have a great time. And thank you to the board. You're great role models for us. And you certainly do lead the way and challenge us every day to be better at what we do and lead that way for us. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Dr. Weston. And one last thing. I did attend the Industry Day.
Yes.
And I saw the new, the tattoo and the new
Oh, yes.
opportunities and the massage therapies. And then I saw, and community people coming together, Ms. Carson with her class on forensic nursing, which was really, really exciting. She's a great lady. And then the next thing, they invited me to be a cake judge. The wrong person. But the students did an excellent job. I appreciate you to the teacher and to all the students. And I was very grateful to have been a judge to taste the cake, and I did enjoy it, and they made some great products. And I'm glad. I'll do it again. So I ate a lot of cake. I'll do it again. Thank you so much. And we entertain emotion. Second, it's meeting adjourned. Nobody in objection?